Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 17th, 2019. This time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. All council members are present. I'm going to take a moment and just do some quick introductions. So down off the dais to the far left, we have our city attorney, Mr. Bill McClure. To his immediate right, we have our city manager, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson. To my far left, we have council member Catherine Carlton. To my immediately left, we have our mayor pro temp, Cecilia Taylor. To my immediate right, we have council member Betsy Nash. To her immediate right, we have council member Drew Combs. And then down off the dais, we have our city clerk, Ms. Judy Heron. If anyone has a comment on any of the items on the agenda this evening, if you could go ahead and fill out a comment card and provide that to Ms. Heron, we'll know to call you when that item is called. At this time, if we could go ahead and everyone rise and join the pleasurable legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first agenda item we have this evening is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment cards this evening? All right, we can go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. Does anyone have any items they'd like to pull from the consent calendar? No? Okay, real quickly, I just want to make this statement on item E1, that in the new year, I would like to actually explore the idea of creating a narrowly tailored exception for the sale of these, potentially of these devices, under medical supervision behind a pharmacy counter. That's something that we can talk about in the new year. With that, if someone would like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and prove the consent calendar. Oh, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Taylor, a second from council member Betsy Nash. Councilmember Betsy Nash, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, and with that, we're going to move on to the main event. So the first item this evening on the agenda is the recognition of the outgoing mayor. I'm going to turn the item over to Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
It is an honor for me to stand before you today. I truly appreciate your mentorship, Mayor Mueller. I will still be calling you Mayor Mueller, at least for a few more moments. I appreciate the invaluable mentorship and the leadership that you have provided the council this past year. Through your leadership, the new council was given the opportunity to bring any item we were concerned about to the council, and you would consider putting it on the agenda. Through your leadership, I learned agenda management, meeting management, and a thoughtful way to build relationships with our staff. Helping me was actually the biggest benefit, to sit by you during the agenda setting meetings. And I'd like to thank you and present you this proclamation.
Thank you. So it's kind of customary in the city that we read the proclamation, but I actually asked them to skip that this year, because I already had a say to the city, already talked about it, no need to keep talking about the past. But what I would like to do first is just thank a few people. And I was told not to go on too much about this, but I'm going to anyway. So when I was, you know, back at home, I was one of those kids who was in city council, I mean, not city council, in student body. And when I was in my senior year, I ran sophomore, actually, my junior year going into my senior year, I ran for student body president. And they took a picture of that event in the local paper. And in the front row, the photographer was great, because he actually got a picture of this girl who I had a massive crush on at the time. And I'm fortunate this evening, because she's here in the front row again, and I still have a massive crush on her. And I just want to thank my wife, Kristen, and my kids, Max and Ellie, who have really empowered me to go ahead and do this public service. And I'm very, very lucky for that. I'd like to go ahead and thank my colleagues again, Catherine, Cecilia, Betsy, and Drew, for a magnificent year. I'd like to thank the city's professional staff for all the work that you did this year. Thank you. And I'd like to thank our city's attorneys, Bill McClure and Kara Silver. We definitely put you to work this year. And I'd like to thank our city manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. I appreciate all of you very much. And I'd like to thank the residents of the city of Menlo Park for the opportunity to have served you. For that, I am very grateful. So instead of reading the proclamation, you know, the first time I was mayor, we did the proclamation. I don't remember anything from that. I really don't. What's more, what will mean more to me and be a better keepsake is if the professional staff and our city attorney and our city manager and my colleagues would join me for a picture with the proclamation that I could keep. So if someone would volunteer to take the picture, if you all could join us up here now, I'd really appreciate it. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and proceed to item F2, selection of the mayor and vice mayor. Ms. Heron, are there any public comment cards on this item? Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting over to our city clerk, Ms. Judy Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. At this time, I will take nominations for mayor.
I'm going to go ahead and nominate Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, by acclamation, can the council concur for Mayor Taylor?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the nomination for mayor, and I appreciate everyone voting for me as well. Thank you, Ray, and I am grateful that you will continue on the dais. We appreciate your service. What makes our council unique is that we have three elected representatives that are specific from districts and two that are citywide. Together, we provide a unique perspective of the city of Menlo Park and what our community is looking for in our service. So thank you. First item on the agenda is to look for nominations for vice mayor. Are there any nominations for vice mayor? Councilmember Nash?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Drew Combs for vice mayor.
Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? Well, I guess, by acclamation?
By acclamation. Can we select Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is to appoint city council representatives and alternatives to various regional agencies. Excuse me, before we do that, Vice Mayor Combs, would you like to make a statement?
Sure, I'll make a statement. I thank you for, you know, for the honor of being able to serve as vice mayor. My wife isn't here because, or my daughter is, because at her daycare, they have an annual festival, and that's occurring tonight. And if there's any doubt who is top billing in my house, my wife and my daughter at the daycare festival, and not here tonight. But I really appreciate it. It's been an honor to be on city council, an honor to learn from the professional staff and my colleagues over the past year. And I do accept the role with humility. And it reminds me of sort of, to some degree, the randomness of life, because I literally ended up in Menlo Park because of Craigslist and an apartment that fell right within my price range. And that, you know, that's how it sort of all started, but I think in many respects that speaks to life. And so for me, it has been really, being involved in government, the local government here, has been an amazing journey, and I look forward to continuing it as vice mayor.
Thank you. So now, we'll move on to F3, appoint city council representatives and alternatives to various regional agencies and liaisons to the city council advisory bodies, and disband
Mayor Taylor, before we begin the appointments, is it possible to discuss our vote on the disbanding of the two bodies?
Yes. Which two bodies are up for to be disbanded?
The first one is the Heritage Tree Task Force, and the second is the Bell Haven Neighborhood
Okay, we have a motion already to accept the disbanding of the two advisory bodies. And now, we can vote?
So the next part of this item is to appoint members, primaries, and alternates and liaisons to various committees, commissions, outside agencies. On the screen, as well as in your packets, you should have a list of the 2020 city council appointments. If we can just go down that list and appoint that way, and I will have them on the screen
Okay, the first one is the community grant funding. Okay, Councilmember Carlton and Councilmember, Vice Mayor Combs. So the next one is the Menlo Park Chamber of Commerce, which will automatically be myself and Vice Mayor Combs. The rail subcommittee?
I'm happy to come off the committee, so council, if someone else wants to serve on it, or I'm happy to stay on it, whatever you all prefer.
Yeah, I was planning to roll off too, so.
Okay, then I'm happy to stay on it for continuity.
I'd be happy to serve.
So Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember Nash will be on the rail subcommittee. The next is the city council-appointed advisory body for the Complete Streets Commission.
I would be happy to serve again, but I actually think that there's some value in rotating this, so that other council members have an opportunity to learn more about the various commissions, such as the Complete Streets Commission.
I'm happy to, if you want to do it, it's cool.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it on.
Vice Mayor Combs will be on Complete Streets Commission as a liaison. The next is the Environmental Quality Commission.
I would be happy to do the Environmental Quality Commission.
Councilmember Nash is on the Environmental Quality Commission. Finance and Audit?
I'd like to stay on Finance and Audit.
If there's someone who would like to roll on, I'm more than willing to defer, but I'm also willing to stay on it.
The Housing Commission? There are no volunteers, I'll be on as the liaison, I'll continue as the liaison for the Housing Commission. Library Commission? Okay, Councilmember Carlton for the Library Commission. Parks and Rec Commission?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Mueller for Parks and Rec Commission. Planning Commission?
I'm happy to do it, if you guys want, or if one of you wants.
I mean, I can tell, I know you've done it the past year, so.
I've done it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it on.
All right.
Thank you.
Confirming Vice Mayor Combs on the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Sister City Committee? Councilmember Carlton. The Transportation Master, oh, there's two. Any volunteers for the, as an alternate?
Can I suggest it be you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So myself and Councilmember Carlton for the Sister City Committee. Transportation Master Plan Oversight and Outreach?
I'd like to remain on the committee.
Are there any other volunteers?
I'm happy to do it if you don't want to do it.
Um.
It's up to you. That's fine, I can stay on it.
Confirming Councilmembers Nash and Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Airport Roundtable?
I think it makes sense for you to be on that one.
Mayor Taylor will be on Airport Community Roundtable.
I'll be your alternate.
Yes. And Councilmember Carlton will be the alternate. The next one is Association of Bay Area Governments. Is that, it doesn't say that. Ms. Heron, is this typically the mayor and vice mayor, even though it doesn't state that here?
It is, yes.
Okay, so that one is.
With all these, it's typically, but it's not mandatory. So some years it is, some years it isn't, just depending on the pleasure of the mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor Combs, are you? Okay, so myself and Vice Mayor Combs will be on ABAG. The next is the Caltrain Modernization Local Policy Group.
I would be happy to serve on that.
Yeah.
This position will mirror the rail subcommittee. Thank you.
Let's, for the sake of it, let's go ahead and make sure Councilmember Nash is primary, and I'm the alternate on that.
The next is City-County Association of Governments. You had to vote? Councilmember Carlton and Councilmember Nash? So who will be primary?
Carlton.
Mayor Taylor, can you please repeat for CCAG?
CCAG will be, primary will be Councilmember Carlton, the alternate, Councilmember Nash. County of Santa Clara Community Resource Group for Stanford University, this is one we decided, I believe, last week, which would be Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember The next is Emergency Services Council. I will be volunteering myself. Do you want to go back? I have a question, Judy. Ms. Heron, can we go back? Councilmember Nash wants to be primary on the resource group, the Stanford Resource Group? Are you? Okay, going back to Emergency Services Council, I am volunteering to be primary. Is there anyone interested in being the alternate? Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs volunteered to be the alternate. The next item is the Facebook Local Community Fund.
I can do that.
Councilmember Mueller is primary, and Councilmember Carlton is the alternate. The next is the Grand Boulevard Initiative Task Force.
I'd be interested in staying on that.
Is anyone interested as the alternate?
I can stay on that.
Vice Mayor Combs will be the alternate. The next is the League of California Cities Peninsula Division. So that will be myself and Vice Mayor Combs. The next on the list is HART Board Member Agency Committee.
I'd be interested in serving on that.
Councilmember Nash will be primary. Are there any volunteers for the alternate?
I'm happy to do it.
Councilmember Mueller will be the alternate. Peninsula Clean Energy Authority? Councilmember Carlton will be primary. Are there any volunteers for alternate?
I can do the alternate.
Okay.
Unless, I've done it before, do you want to do it?
Sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Nash will be the alternate. The next item, San Francisco Guido Creek JPA.
Shouldn't you be that?
So Vice Mayor Combs will be primary, and Mayor Taylor will be the alternate. The next item is the Samhail County Council of Cities, City Selection Committee, which will be myself and Vice Mayor Combs. The last item is the South Bay Waste Management Authority, which, okay. So it has it here for mayor, so would you be interested in being the alternate?
For mayor?
It has on there, primary is the mayor.
Really? Because I've been the primary the entire time.
Okay, I'm not sure what happened last year. Ms. Heron, do you?
It's never been the mayor. It was staff, and then it opened up to all city council members six years ago, I think. And I've served on it five years, and Ray served on it one year. It's never been the mayor.
Okay. Ms. Heron?
It's possible that this is a typo.
Oh, okay, well, that's good.
So if you want to do it, you're welcome.
I'm happy to serve as the alternate, if you want to be primary.
Okay.
Okay.
It's in the afternoon, that's why I was thinking it would be hard for some of the others. It's at 2:00 on the first, Thursday.
Yes. Yes.
It does look like the Housing Commission, as well as the San Francisco Roundtable, may have a conflict in scheduling, and you are serving as primary on both.
Okay, Councilmember Nash can do housing. I believe we've completed F3.
So by acclamation, we can make the appointments that we just completed?
The next item on the agenda is F4, provide direction to the city's voting delegate regarding regional vacancies for the next city selection committee meeting on December 20th.
And for those council members who haven't been before, that one is a very big meeting. They meet the last Friday of every month, and it's open to all council members. And it's at the Fire Hall in Colma, and the fire officers there are very good cooks, and it's usually a very big dinner. And it's a celebration of the new people being elected and all this. So I was going to say, if you would like, if anyone would like to carpool, because the traffic is usually horrific, A, you're welcome to carpool with me, B, be very fair warned that you have to leave ahead of time.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. The first, did you have more?
I was just thinking, it looks like they're all one person, except for the one with Cliff Lynch. Lentz. Is that correct?
For the Sammataill County Transportation Authority.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we are all in agreeance with appointing Mayor Davina Hurt, or past Mayor Davina Hurt, for City of Belmont, for the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. So, we're all in support of that.
Yeah.
So, we just support everyone who has applied, and only one person applied for that position. So.
And so, Mayor, for this item, will you be the city's voting delegate?
Yes.
Perfect. That's what this item will be for?
Okay. Thank you. So, we still choose for the Transportation Authority?
You can ask us.
So, I would prefer if we choose as a council, as far as who we appoint for these positions. So, does anyone have a preference or input on whether it be Mayor Medina or Councilmember Cliff Lentz?
Go for it.
Sure. I'd support Cliff, so.
Does anyone else have any input? Councilmember Carlton, your light's on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know. You didn't tell me about it.
So, are we going to? So, Vice Mayor Combs, you're comfortable with Councilmember Lentz for Transportation Authority?
(inaudible).
Mayor Rico Medina, City of San Bruno?
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Is there a point each?
No.
No, he said he'd support the same person. I don't think we've heard anything alternatively.
Okay. Okay. So, that completes F4, and we can move on now to item G, city manager's report.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
I would just like to reaffirm the report that I had last night that came a little belatedly, that we did receive an offer letter from Facebook yesterday afternoon, and we'll be sharing that largely by, I think, by tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. So, moving to item H, are there any council members that have a report? Well, at this time, I'd like to invite everyone to the gatehouse for reception, and thank you for being here, and the meeting is adjourned.